If you want us all Kansas, you study for law, you practice in Kansas. I think it's gonna be hard to do that transition because the laws are so different.
Oh, yeah.
So, I don't know. It'll be interesting to see what she does. I told her that I think it's gonna be hard to-
She'll come for at least three to five years.
-pick up in a random place, but that's not my style either, so.
Is it the pledge first and then invocation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner.
And you can pray the pledge if you need to.
Yeah.
You can pray. Yeah. Which you almost tried to do that once, didn't you?
He did. Yeah, he enjoyed it.
Yeah.
It is one o'clock on Tuesday, August 5th. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
It's Commissioner Ortiz's turn to do the pledge of allegiance and invocation. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray for me. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask that you be with us today. We ask that you just protect us and give us peace. Lord, we thank you for everything that you have given us. We thank you for the cool weather this last weekend. We just ask that you continue to be with our community, Lord. Help us to be safe out there. Help us, those who are working out there, to keep others safe, Lord. And we just ask that you watch over us. Lord, we ask that you just be in our hearts, be in our minds, be with our families and our friends, Lord. It's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Item four is the approval of the minutes. I didn't see any changes. Anybody else? Little stand approved as presented then. Number five on the agenda is public comment. This is a time where we have the community come forward. With any items that are not on the agenda, we give you five minutes, and when you do come forward, please state your name.
I forgot it.
You forgot it?
This is Tom Howard.
Yes, sir.
And I went and attended a meeting last night that I was bothered with the fact the city inspection department and the American Legion are not together or happy. It seems that before I was more or less out of the American Legion for four years already, we had the same situation where they would get work permits and things would get done partially, and then we get told that, oh, we done it all wrong, or it doesn't pass inspection. And then we have conflicting inspections from different departments that have to make inspections, you know, more than one person. And then the final person, I guess, that comes in to make it, to scrub it, turn the dog off, or whatever. And I'm just here as a peacemaker, I guess. I don't have an olive branch, but I would like to see something happen to them. City government, I would ask of you to consider giving them a way of getting this done, maybe a meeting with the commission in like the next meeting, get them on the agenda. They told me that they can't even get on the agenda, but I don't know that they even know how to get onto the agenda. So with that, I would like to try to get things resolved for them because it's costing them. They are mentioned that they thought that the city was treating them as a business instead of a nonprofit entity. I don't know how much of that is only you, no, and him.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Please go.
We'll look into it.
All right.
Anyone else? Oh, yes, sir.
I mean, Green Wharton on it. Someone mentioned about, someone looks at sales tax, so I think that's a challenge. So, we're supposed to get a sales tax update during this meeting at some point in time. I have other things to do. But I took your city's tax records. I'm not sure if they're inflation adjusted or not, but then I inflation adjusted to 2025 numbers. It looks to be about from 2016 to 2025, your sales tax revenue is kind of plateaued for inflation adjusted numbers. There are different classifications of sales tax. And look at the second page there, sorry, third page. That's from the audit report out of 2024. Your average inflation rate is about 4% or so, so there's some definition of what sales tax is and whether it's going to the city, county, or state. So there's something there that seems to be missing or not collecting additional sales tax revenue above rate of inflation. And some of that is going to be to population growth, wage growth, that increases overall spending on it. So that's something you might want to look into. So that's about all I have.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roy.
Anyone else? All right, moving on to item 6A.
Item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim August 10th through 16th, 2025, as Municipal Courts Week in Garden City, Kansas.
Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve the proclamation as presented.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. That item passed.
And would you like me to read this, Mayor? And I think the governing body, we've got some members from the court here.
Either way, if you want to read it, or I can read it?
Go ahead.
You want to read it?
You got it.
Okay. The proclamation reads, whereas municipal courts play a significant role in preserving public safety and maintaining public trust in the judicial system, and whereas the city of Garden City is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, and competent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us and that judges and court personnel should comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence in the integrity and impartiality of judiciary. And whereas the city commission recognizes that the constitution and laws of the state of Kansas contain procedural safeguards in criminal cases for all defendants, including engine defendants, and supports the Garden City Municipal Court in complying with such legal requirements, and whereas the work of municipal courts is carried out by a dedicated team of professionals, including judges, prosecutors, bailiffs, court clerks, court administrators, and support staff, whose collective efforts ensure the fair and equitable delivery of justice. Now therefore, I, Roy Cessna, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim August 10th through the 16th, 2025, as Municipal Court Week in recognition of the fair and impartial justice offered to our residents by the Municipal Court of Garden City, Kansas. Sign and seal the fifth day of August, 2025. Roy Cessna, Mayor. Did you want to say something too? Sure.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. It's my honor to take a moment to recognize and celebrate the dedicated individuals who make our municipal courts one and just a place where justice is served, but where fairness and dignity can not only be hoped for, but expected. Our court is powered by a team whose roles may look different, but whose shared purpose is the same. To our judges, who shoulder the responsibility of making decisions that affect lives and shape communities. To our prosecutors, who are diligently to uphold the law with integrity and fairness. To our bailiffs, who protect and maintain the order that allows justice to flourish. And to our clerks and leadership, who often unseen, who's often unseen, but invaluable work keeps everything running smoothly every single day. Thank you. Through every busy docket and every difficult decision, they continue to show a commitment to provide exceptional service. They all use their unique set of skills and talents to embody the belief that justice should be acceptable, fair, and impartial, not just in principle, but in practice. And that belief is lived out daily through their kindness, their hard work, and their quiet acts of service that often go unnoticed. I'm proud to be part of this team. So today, throughout Municipal Court Week, we pause to say we see you, we value you, and we are deeply grateful for all you do to keep our court strong, fair, and welcoming to all. Thank you for your dedication, your professionalism, and your heart for justice.
Thank you very much. We're gonna get a picture with the commissioners and if you, and some of the staff that are here. There you go. Come on, man. Okay.
Where are you walking in the back? Where are you gonna put the photo?
You're over here. See, let me get in the back. There we go. I'll stand, I'll stand behind you.
There you go.
There we go. Thanks, Roy. Yeah. Smile.
One, two, three. I'm gonna take another, so we're gonna get fired.
All right. Congratulations. Okay. Item 6B.
The governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Steve Jesse with Midnight Oasis to allow under Code Section 6.1 possession, consumption, and sale of cereal malt beverages or alcoholic liquors at Stevens Park on the following dates, September 13th for Community Mexican Fiesta and September 20th for Fall Fest. Cee-Lin?
Hey, Mayor and Commissioners. As Matt stated, the governing body has asked to approve, consider and approve this request, which would allow alcoholic beverages and cereal malt beverage to be sold, possessed, and consumed at Stevens Park. Just for those two events, you guys previously approved allowing Mr. Jesse to serve at Fall Fest, sorry, Food Truck Fridays. That was at a previous meeting, but per the City of Garden City Code Ordinance, Section 6.1 is unlawful consumption. We don't allow for unlawful consumption or possession of alcohol, alcohol in public places specifically in the parks. So we do have to come before the governing body to get a waiver to allow that.
So I guess my question is, is there going to be a special setup area for this?
Yes. Anytime a business would like to set up for alcoholic beverages, they do have to do a 3D barrier around the area that they're going to be serving.
Now, as far as on this, is he going to be the only person allowed to sell alcoholic beverages during these two events, or are there going to be additional people coming for the request?
As far as I know, he is the only person that either one of those entities or agent groups has given them permission to be there serving.
But there's a possibility that if others ask them, that they could also come for a waiver?
Yes, there is that possibility.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve the request as presented.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, item 7A, under the report of the city manager, Assistant City Manager Burke will present an update on the 2025 build grant application.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. As you will recall earlier this year, the City of Garden City submitted a Better Utilizing Investments to Leverage Development, or commonly referred to as Build, and formally referred to as the RACE Grant, for design work related to a great separated crossing at Spruce Street and US Highway 835400. Unfortunately, the city was made aware that our project was not one of the 30 selected projects during this latest round of funding. We did include for your agenda packet, all of those projects that did get funding this second round of the build process. One of those was in Kansas. The city will have the opportunity to receive feedback on our application so that we can utilize that as we look at future grant opportunities and that type of thing, and take that feedback into consideration and into account if we do apply for a similar type project in the future. So with that, we wanted to just give you an update on where we stand related to that project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Danielle on this? All right. Thank you very much. Good job.
The other items under report of the city manager, our staff reports, do you have any, well, with the exception of 7D, which is a communication from Cox Communications regarding their lineup change, consistent with the, with our agreement with them, franchise agreement with them. Do you have questions on either 7B or 7C?
Any questions? No. Or comments? Nope. All right, moving on to item eight.
Item eight, meetings of note. You'll see several items on there. Just call special attention to National Night Out tonight. I think several of you are going to try to join our public safety personnel in getting around to, I believe, 13 at last count, chiefs?
He shook his head, yes.
Yeah.
They're shaking their heads, yes.
Different neighborhoods that are participating in National Night Out.
That's really good for our community. That's great.
So, yeah, come with empty stomachs and-
Definitely pace yourselves.
It'll be a great, great time. I would also like to add for your consideration, the September 16th pre-meeting time slot as a possibility for a joint meeting with the county. My communication with interim County Administrator Gary Meager, that seems like it should work. I don't know that that's been finalized, but it's got a high probability of working for the county commissioners. So if that's good with the city commission to do that, we had kind of mapped out pre-meetings for the rest of the year, but we, senior staff in our meeting last week believed that we could push those out, one meeting further without any complications to the commission, and use that time slot for a joint meeting.
Sounds good.
All right, very good. We'll, we'll at least plan on that and also make note of it in the minutes for public notice, or probably a future agendas so that we meet our public notice requirement.
I did have a question on the Kansas Association of Airports, Matt. Is that something that would be of interest, or, I mean, this is the first time I've ever seen it near Western Kansas. Is it something that would be recommended for us to attend, or is there a part of it that would be valuable for us to attend?
If Rochelle's here, she can answer that.
Good afternoon. So the Kansas Association of Airports is coming to Western Kansas. They're very happy to host them here in Garden City. Mostly it's airport managers across the state. There's 143 public airports. Not all those managers attend, but hopefully more of our Western Kansas airport managers can attend since it's closer to this area. A lot of consultants, engineering firms, and then products that air builds need are usually the vendors that attend to. You're more than welcome to. We do have a registration, but if you're interested, please let me know, and I can get you registered for the conference. It will be at the Clarion Inn. We also have an evening event Thursday night, so you're welcome to that. There's also, we're partaking in our beautiful golf course at the Blue Dunes for all the golfers. So if anybody's interested in participating, let me know. Mayor Cessna will be opening the conference and welcoming everybody to our community. So, yeah, just let me know, and we can get you into that. You don't have to come to every session, but I can send you the agenda, and you can pick and choose what you like.
Yeah, I didn't know if there was like a presentation talking about where aviation was going, so I mean, I thought that would be-
In general, yeah, there's a lot of different topics. Each session's about 45 minutes to an hour, and it's just kind of everything airport in general. But, yeah, once the agenda is finalized, I can send it to you, and then you can make the decision as well.
Oh, great. Thanks.
Yeah, if you could get that to Cee-Lin, and she could send it to us.
Yeah.
Or you could send it. Either way.
We're still working out the details, but as soon as we have it ready.
Well, congratulations for bringing them out here, Western Kansas. I think that says a lot.
Yeah, the project was the major odd. Everybody wants to check out the new development.
Nope. Congratulations.
Still hear a lot of good things about it.
Yeah, thank you.
And people driving by on US 50, they look over and see it all lit up and everything. They're pretty impressed with our terminals, so.
Very grateful for the project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rochelle.
Any other questions on any of the meetings of note? Okay.
All right, we're ready for item nine then. Item 9A, appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2592-2025A.
I'll make the motion to approve appropriation ordinance number 2592-2025A.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on this item? None being? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. That item passed. 10A, make note that Commissioner Landgraf will be stepping down on this item from the bench.
Item 10A, the governing body is being asked to consider and approve a resolution which would authorize the sale of special obligation revenue bonds for Sports of the World Phase Two project. If approved, it would be resolution number 3206-2025. Danielle?
Matt, before I get started on this, would you mind calling in Mr. Abbott?
Will he be interested in item 12 as well, or 12E?
This is Mark.
Hi, Mark. Matt Allen with the City of Garden City. You're in a public meeting right now. We are just taking up agenda item 10A on the city commission's agenda, which is the resolution authorizing the sale of special obligation revenue bonds for the Sports of the World Phase Two project. Can you hear me okay?
I can. Thank you for the call.
You're welcome. And I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Danielle to present the agenda item.
All right. Good afternoon again, Mayor and Commissioners. On October 1st of 2024, the city commission approved resolution number 3130-2024, declaring official intent to issue STAR bonds for Sports of the World Phase Two. This action was taken so that the developers could, at their own risk, begin to spend reimbursable funds on Phase Two. On February 18th of 2025, the city commission held a public hearing and approved ordinance number 3007-2025 to expand the STAR bond district. On June 3rd of 2025, the commission held another public hearing and approved ordinance number 3017-2025, approving the project plan amendment. On July 10th, 2025, the Lieutenant Governor and Secretary of Commerce approved, or provided a determination letter determining the Phase Two project as an eligible area, approving the project plan amendment, and approving the issuance of up to $45,126,189 in STAR bond financing. The STAR bond act authorizes the city to issue sales tax and revenue, or STAR, special obligation bonds. Special obligation bonds are paid back with only the state and city sales tax revenues from the STAR bond district dedicated to the STAR bonds. The city does not back the bonds with the full faith and credit of the city. The proposed special obligation bond issuance is expected to be sold as a private placement and/or limited offering rather than a traditional offering to the public. These bonds will be offered to sophisticated buyers who understand the intricacies of a STAR bond project and the security of the bonds. The governing body offers the city manager to engage with crews and associates to serve as a placement agent or underwriter for the STAR bond issuance. They have been tasked with advising the city as to the current bond market and help with the final determination of a private placement and/or limited offering in lieu of a traditional public offering. Crews and associates advise the city on the Phase One bond issuance, serve as a placement agent for those bonds, and is familiar with the district's performance, the project, the developer, and the city. The proposed resolution outlines the actions taken related to the proposed project and authorizes crews and associates, the city manager, finance director, and bond counsel to proceed with the necessary steps to complete the private placement and/or limited offering of the STAR bonds. It also authorizes the mayor to execute the purchase agreement for the STAR bonds, subject to the following parameters. A, the aggregate principal amount of the bonds will not exceed $52,500,000. B, the true interest cost does not exceed 7%. And C, receipt of approval of the Secretary of Commerce. An ordinance authorizing the STAR bonds and all necessary documents to complete the issuance of the STAR bonds is expected to be on the September 2nd, 2025 city commission meeting. There are two alternatives before you this afternoon. The first, the governing body may approve the resolution authorizing the sale of special obligation revenue bonds for Sports of the World Phase Two. Or two, the governing body may not approve the resolution. Staff recommends the governing body approve the resolution. The fiscal note associated with this item is that the action indicates the issuance of special obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $52,500,000 to finance a portion of the project. The issuance costs will be repaid by the STAR bond proceeds generated by purchases made within the STAR bond district, and includes the following. That 6.5% that's dedicated to the state, our 0.5% for the city's unobligated portion of the city sales tax, and then the unobligated portion of the county sales tax that comes to the city as well. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Any questions for Danielle?
So we have the Lieutenant Governor's approval letter, and so really, this is, you only lacking these, this step here, and then everything is, after September 2nd, is on.
So we do have their approval letter, and that's what gives the up to amount included in that letter. We then, they still, the state still has a role to play, and they're gonna do kind of one additional step between now and us actually issuing the bonds. But we did get that approval letter from them, which is a huge step in the direction to get these bonds sold and that, and that process completed.
No, I appreciate that. Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we approve resolution number 3206-2025, authorizing the sale of the City of Garden City, Kansas, Sales Tax Special Obligation Revenue Bonds, Sports of the World Phase Two STAR Bond Projects Series 2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Commissioner Ortiz made the second. Any discussion on that item? None being? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll wait for Commissioner Landgraf to return back to the bench.
Thank you, Mark. The item passed.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Item 10B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution establishing a date and time for a public hearing regarding the Reinvestment Housing Incentive District for San Sage Square, Phase One. And if approved, the resolution number would be 3207-2025. John?
Good afternoon. As required by the RHID statute, this resolution establishes a date and time for a public hearing at which the development plan and ordinance establishing the San Sage Square RHID will be considered. The date and time proposed for this resolution is on September 16th, 2025 at 1:30 PM. This area has been approved by the state of Kansas to be included in the RHID program. This resolution is the second step for the commission, is the second step the commission needs to establish the RHID for San Sage Square. The San Sage Square development is located at 1801 Palace Drive. Phase One of this development will include four multifamily residential buildings, each containing 12 dwelling units, for a total of 48 dwelling units altogether. There are two alternatives before you today. One, the governing body may approve the attached resolution. Two, the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. And staff recommends the governing body approve the attached resolution, and there's no possible impact.
Any questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we approve resolution number 3207-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12A, governing body is asked to consider and approve the updated Western Area Power Administration Integrated Resource Plan. Mike?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The City of Garden City has a contract with the Western Area Power Administration, which we refer to as WAPA, for 2.298 megawatts of power until the year 2050. Every five years, WAPA requires all its customers to complete or revise a community- Every five years, WAPA requires all its customers to complete or revise the community's integrated resource plan. WAPA customers, WAPA customers will comply with the requirements of the Energy Planning and Management Program to meet the objections, the objectives of Section 114 of the Energy Policy Act of 1992. A WAPA customer is any entity that purchases firm capacity with or without energy from WAPA under long-term power supply contract. Integrated Resource Planning allows customers to meet the objectives of Sections 114 of the Energy Policy Act of 1992. Integrated Resource Planning is a planning process for new energy resources that evaluates a full range of alternatives, including new generating capacity, power purchases, energy conservation and efficiency, renewable energy resources, district heating and cooling applications and cogenerations to provide reliable service to electric customers. An IRP supports utility development goals and schedules. An IRP must treat demand and supply resources on a consistent and integrated basis. The plan must take into account necessary features for system operation and system diversity, reliability, dispatchability, and other risk factors. The plan must take into account the ability to verify energy savings achieved through the energy efficiency and projected durability of such savings measured over time. So with all that said, the governing body may authorize the mayor to sign the 2025 Integrated Resource Plan for the Western Area Power Administration, or the governing body may choose to not authorize the mayor to sign that document. Staff recommends that you authorize the mayor to sign that document, and that will be sent off to the Western Area Power Administration. There is no fiscal impact by approving this updated IRP. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the 2025 Integrated Resource Plan for the Western Area Power Administration.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you. Thank you.
Item twelve B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a change order and applicable fees for an additional expansion area to the Valley View Cemetery Project. Tisha.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
During the city commission meeting on March fourth, 2025, the contract for the Valley View Cemetery Expansion Project was awarded to M&amp;T Excavation LLC for the amount of $708,880.29. This bid was significantly lower than the original estimate and budget for 2023. The demand for burial plots of the cemetery continues to rise. Staff anticipates that the new cemetery area may need to be utilized as soon as the end of this year, and projects that, at the current rate of sale, the expansion will take approximately eight years to sell out. The project team has developed a proposal to expand the area, providing additional capacity while leveraging the competitive pricing from the original bid. The initial scope of the project included 2,207 new plots. The proposed additional expansion area adds 1,464 more plots, resulting in a total of 3,671 plots. Staff estimates that the additional plots will provide an added five years of capacity, bringing the total to 13 years before another expansion is required. A proposed change order for the expansion has been prepared, amounting to $420,292.50. This pricing maintains the unit prices from the original contract while providing proposals for lump sum items. The staff has reviewed these price proposals and considers them reasonable, given the scale of work relative to the original contract. The original project is on track to be completed ahead of schedule, the scheduled completion date of November fifteenth, 2025. If approved, the contractor intends to complete the additional expansion area by December fifteenth of 2025, with the final seating scheduled for the spring of 2026 if necessary. The anticipated cost for the original project is currently unchanged from not presented at the March fourth, 2025 meeting, and is as follows. That included the bid award, change order two, the change order one and two, engineering survey, irrigation consultant plating, miscellaneous fees, and then contingency, for a total of The anticipated costs for the proposed addition are the change order three, additional engineering costs, and additional miscellaneous costs, for a total of $460,292.50. This makes the total additional, or the total cost, $4,600,260,000. I was doing something. I was like, running off those numbers.
That's right. I was impressed.
The projected total with the proposed addition is $1,284,066.50. Staff is investigating additional improvements, which would include expanding the columbarium and estimated $75,000 project, as well as planting trees in the expansion area. Your alternatives are, one, the governing body may approve change order three for an additional expansion area to the Valley View Cemetery Project in the amount of $420,292.50. Or, two, the governing body may not approve the change order three for an additional expansion area to Valley View Cemetery Project, and advise staff further. The recommendation is to approve change order three for an additional expansion area to Valley View Cemetery Project in the amount of $420,292.50. Just a fiscal note to be aware of, the city issued $1,700,000 in general obligation bonds to cover the Valley View Cemetery Project. With the approval of change order three, as well as the associated engineering and miscellaneous costs of the proposed addition, the current total cost estimate for this project will be at $1,284,066.50, leaving a remaining balance of $415,933.50 of the general obligation bond revenue, which can then be allocated for the columbarium and landscaping as needed. Expenses for this project would be coded to GL40277100-6121. Any questions?
Any questions?
So I have a question. So since this was a change order, you don't have to go back out to bid, is that correct?
I believe that is correct.
Okay. And so the other thing I was curious about, on the contingency, so that in, oh, the original bid, there was a contingency of $27,561. So if that is not used, will that reduce the overall cost of?
Yes.
Okay. And then that's just additional dollars that can either be used for expansion or the landscaping in?
They could be used for that, but it has to be used at Valley View Cemetery.
Right.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make the motion to approve change order three for an additional expansion area to the Valley View Cemetery Project in the amount of $420,292.50.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Item twelve C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the agreement for solid waste disposal service between the City of Garden City and the Finney County Landfill, Inc., a subsidiary of Waste Connections, Inc. Tyler.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Finney County Landfill Incorporated is the primary waste disposal provider for the City of Garden City. They've been a good, reliable partner, built some good working relationships with them, and they've also worked with us during our spring and fall cleanup, with waiving those fees during that period of time. On August seventeenth, 2010, the governing body approved a fifteen-year agreement between the City of Garden City and Waste Connections, which manages the Finney County Landfill. That agreement provided a rate increase schedule with six rate increases over a fifteen-year term, and expires on September first, 2025. The current disposal rate will continue until January first, 2028, and increase by four percent every three years after. If approved, the new agreement will commence on August first, 2025, and expire on September first, 2040. The two alternatives before you today is, one, the governing body may approve the fifteen-year waste disposal agreement with the Finney County Landfill Incorporated, a subsidiary of Waste Connections Incorporated. Or two, the governing body may choose not to approve the fifteen-year waste disposal agreement between the Finney County Landfill Incorporated, a subsidiary of Waste Connections Incorporated, and reiterate staff. The recommendation is, staff from that recommends the governing body approve the fifteen-year agreement with the Finney County Landfill Incorporated, a subsidiary of Waste Connections Incorporated. And the fiscal note with this is the solid waste landfill charge account, 55157571-5434, will continue to be used to pay the monthly landfill charges, and revenue from the solid waste collection will continue to offset these costs and will be included in future rate considerations. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve the agreement, the fifteen-year waste disposal agreement with Finney County Landfill Incorporated, a subsidiary of Waste Connections Incorporated.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item twelve D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a bid for the fire leg and sprinkler system portion of the 2024 capital improvement project, fire suppression and fire smoke alarm systems. Chief.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. On May twentieth, 2025, staff issued a formal request for proposals soliciting bids for completion, complete installation of fire suppression system and fire and smoke alarm. Installate some of these systems aligned with industry standards, including adherence to the National Fire Protection Association standards. The project is located at Fire Station Two, located at 1605 East Mary. Bid is forgiven, often to submit combined or individual proposals with a submission deadline of June twentieth, 2025. There were two bids received for the fire suppression system and one bid received for the fire smoke alarm system. Tetro Plumbing and Fire Sprinkler bid $95,642 for the installation of the fire leg and the fire suppression system. Dick Construction bid $123,624 for the installation of the fire leg and the fire suppression system. Dick Construction also bid the fire and smoke alarm system for $77,402 for the fire alarm system. The proposal from Tetro Plumbing and Fire Automatic Sprinkler System for the suppression system are within the project budget. The bid for the installation of the fire and smoke alarm system is over the budget. Staff recommends rejecting the current bid and rebidding the portion of the project. The alternative before you, as the governing body, may approve the bid from Tetro Plumbing for $31,617 for the installation of the fire leg, and the bid from Prior Automatic Sprinkler System for $64,025 for the fire suppression system, and reject the bid for Dick Construction for the fire alarm and smoke alarm system, and direct staff to rebid the portion of the project. Alternative two, the governing body may reject all bids and direct staff to reopen the bidding process for both fire suppression system and fire alarm system. Staff recommends alternative one. The fiscal note on this is the city allocated $159,000 in capital improvement plan fund for this project. If the bid of the $95,642 is approved, there will be an additional $63,358 budgeted for the remaining work for this capital improvement project to cover the fire alarm system. The cost of this project will come from 40177100-6516. We have to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief?
So how dependent on, are each of these projects on each other? So can you do one without the other, or do you need to do them both at the same time in order to capture what you want to have completed, or?
We do not have to do them at the same time. The only ones we have to do at the same time would be the installation of the fire leg and the suppression system, which we have a good bid for those.
So that will be there, and then when you are able to do the fire alarm system, then you'll be able to do something different?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The project budget total was what for both projects, or what for each project individually?
$159,000 for the total project, $95,000 for the sprinkler system. It should be $54,000 for the fire alarm system, and $10,000 for replacement ceiling after this suppression system was installed.
How much did the sprinkler system from prior miss by?
Prior or Dick Construction?
Well, I'm having a hard time understanding, so you tell me. You're recommending that Tetro Plumbing for $31,617. I'm assuming that's in the $95,642?
Yes. The $64,000 for the sprinkler system went with the combined total of $95,642.
So the project budget, were there two project budgets, or was there one?
There was one total project, but individual parts.
And what was the total project budget?
$159,000.
And that was to cover both the, both the fire suppression and the fire alarm system?
The fire leg, the fire suppression system, and the sprinkler system, and a replacement of ceiling from the sprinkler.
So what do you hope to gain from a rebid, I guess? So are you, just better spec, you have better understanding, you have to ask for additional money, or you're just going to make sure that they understand what's left?
Those are all in the bid.
Trying to expand the reach of fire alarm systems.
Oh, I see.
And get more competitive bids.
Okay.
Project to align it with the budget.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we approve the bid from Tetro Plumbing for $31,617 for the installation of the fire leg, and the bid from Prior Automatic Sprinkler System for $64,025 for the fire suppression system, and reject the bid from Dick Construction for the fire smoke alarm system, and direct staff to rebid that portion of the project.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you. Make note that on item twelve E, Commissioner Landgraf will be stepping down from the bench.
Item twelve E, the city commission is asked to consider and approve a request from Stone Creek Foundation to proceed with an excavation permit for Sports of the World Phase Two. Danielle.
Good afternoon again, Mayor and Commissioners. The city and Stone Creek Station Foundation entered into a development agreement for Sports of the World Phase Two Star Bond Project on June seventeenth, 2025. That agreement generally references the public infrastructure requirements associated with development of the site. The city and developer are currently working on a memorandum of understanding to further articulate the infrastructure needs associated with the project. While that MOU has finalized for city commission consideration, the developer would like to start with the site work. The drafted MOU outlines that the developer may apply for an excavation permit after the following has been completed. Received a notice of intent from the state, received a storm water pollution prevention plan permit from the state, completed a drainage plan with the city, completed a grading plan with the city, and has submitted an application to rezone the property. Most of those items have been completed and submitted to the city. However, that MOU is what would have granted staff the ability to issue that permit, as it falls outside of our stated subdivision regulations. As a result, staff would request the governing body authorize staff to issue the excavation permit once those aforementioned items are completed and the MOU language has been agreed upon by both city staff and the developers. The MOU will come before the city commission for final consideration at your meeting on August nineteenth. Two alternatives before you, the first, the governing body may authorize staff to issue an excavation permit for Sports of the World Phase Two once necessary permits plans and draft memorandum of understanding language is agreed upon, or the governing body may not authorize that request. The recommendation before you all is to authorize staff to issue that excavation permit once those necessary permits, plans, and draft memorandum of understanding language is agreed upon, and there is no fiscal impact related to this item. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So how close are they to receiving all of that? You listed a bunch of things, so what's left to receive to make this?
We've got a couple small things on the drainage and the grading plan that I would imagine are worked out here pretty shortly. And then we've still got to come to an understanding on the MOU language, and we've got a meeting on Thursday, and I'm hopeful that coming out of that meeting, I'll be able to work through the last few permissions that we're talking through.
Yeah, because the nineteenth seems really quick. I didn't know if, okay. So you've received everything from the state, then?
They have gotten everything from the state, yep.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to authorize staff to issue an excavation permit for Sports of the World Phase Two once necessary permits, plans, and
Phase Two once necessary permits, plans and draft memorandum of understanding language is agreed upon.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. That item passed. Thank you. We'll wait for Commissioner Landgraf to return to the bench.
Good afternoon. So the governing body is asked to consider changes to the 2026 city budget so that the notice appearing to exceed the revenue neutral rate and the budget hearing for the 2026 city budget can be prepared. The city commission was presented information and provided staff direction at the July 1st meeting, which is now incorporated into the 2026 budget. The changes made to the budget include the 2026 salary pool was increased by 1% to incorporate a 3% January 1st, 2026 adjustment to the city's pay scale. This equates to approximately $275,300 in increased budget costs. The removal of the proposed education specialist position at the zoo, reducing the 2026 budget by $65,200. A $50,000 reduction to general fund cash carryover to 2027. This leaves a budgeted amount of $3,650,000. It includes a transfer of $200,000 of excess 15 cent sales tax revenue in 2026 to the general fund. A reduction to the material street repair and general fund of $100,000 for 2026. A $50,000 reduction in transfer to the recreation reserve. Reduction of the downtown development fund by $36,549.16, which will be transferred to the general fund. Removal of the $50,000 budgeted in 2025, in 2025 for the review of the city's pay plan. Removal of the $325,000 amount held as a placeholder for the potential implementation of a planned pay plan adjustment. Removal of the $60,000 budgeted for the remodel of space in the city administrative center for the communications department. Removal of the $40,000 budgeted for decision wise surveys for staff in 2025 and 2026. And adjustments to the general fund and airport department budgets for cumulative reduction of $140,000. These changes result in a final mill levy rate of 38.483, which is consistent with the current rate for 2025. With the city commission's consideration and approval of the changes listed above, the 2025 notice of hearing to exceed the revenue neutral rate and budget hearing can be prepared. A draft notice is included with this item. The draft notice incorporates a flat mill levy of 38.483. If the governing body elects to choose an alternative separate from, an alternative separate from that presented in the draft notice, the appropriate changes will be incorporated by staff and the notice will be prepared and published by staff before the August 19th, 2025 meeting to ensure compliance with the publishing requirements for the revenue neutral rate hearing and budget hearing. The public hearing on the revenue neutral rate and the budget is scheduled for September 2nd, 2025 at 1:30 PM. Incorporated into the budget that has been presented are the principal interest cost for a five-year term, general obligation bond for the solid waste fund and the approximate amount of $2.1 million. This will cover the replacement of the five C and G solid waste trucks currently included in the city's fleet, as well as the cost to replace the recycling bayware. With the commission's approval of the draft notice, staff will begin working with the city's bond council and bond advisor to prepare for the bond issuance. Alternatives, so the governing body may approve the budget as presented and authorize staff to publish the notice of hearing to exceed the revenue neutral rate and budget hearing for September 2nd, 2025 at 1:30 PM. Alternative is the governing body may provide direction for staff of additional adjustments to be made to the budget and authorize staff to publish the notice of hearing to exceed the revenue neutral rate and budget hearing for September 2nd, 2025 at 1:30. Recommendation is that staff recommends the governing body to approve the budget as presented and authorize staff to publish the notice of hearing to exceed the revenue neutral rate and budget hearing for September 2nd, 2025 at 1:30 PM.
Any questions for Colleen?
So this basically holds our mill levy to a flat mill levy and so basically using this as preparing for, we can't exceed this amount, but we can go into this amount, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make the motion to approve the budget as presented and authorize staff to publish the notice of hearing to exceed revenue neutral rate and budget hearing for September 2nd, 2025 at 1:30 PM.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. That item passed.
Item 12G, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an appointment to the airport advisory board. Rochelle.
Good afternoon. The airport advisory board has a vacancy with the term expiring December 31st of 2026. We do have 10 applicants on file. The advisory board reviewed all the applicants during the July meeting and recommended Jason Doherty onto the board as he is a pilot and they thought that would benefit the board. With your approval, your, sorry, with your alternative, you can approve to appoint Jason Doherty to the airport advisory board. You may approve any of the other applicants or anybody else that you see fit by board appropriately, or you can provide guidance to staff. Staff and the airport advisory board recommend appointing Jason Doherty to the airport advisory board.
Any questions for Rochelle on this item? None being, entertain a motion on this item.
I move you approve the appointment of Jason Doherty to airport advisory board.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item?
No, I just wanted to say how exciting to have 10 applicants and I do think you did a really good job of choosing someone that has a direct tie to the airport. I also think that's a benefit, so.
Any other comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Item 12H, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an appointment to the public safety advisory board. Chief Rutt.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. The governing body is asked to consider and approve an appointment to the public safety advisory board. The PSAB has seven vacant board positions representing the business, medical, religious, homemaker and the Garden City High School, Garden City Community College student interest groups, as well as a county resident living outside of the corporate limits of Garden City. Todd Linder has submitted an application and is recommended by the PSAB to fill the business vacancy. His term would expire in December of 2028 and is recommended for the appointment based on expertise and proactive involvement and advocacy within the community. The PSAB has received additional applications from individuals interested in serving on the board and will reach out to those applicants about their interest and meeting criteria for other available vacancies. Alternatives before you, the governing body may appoint Todd Linder to fill the business vacancy on the PSAB with his term expiring in December of 2028, or the governing body may deny the appointment and recommend that the PSAB continue to recruit board members. Is the recommendation of staff that the governing body appoint Todd Linder to fill the business vacancy on PSAB with his term expiring in 2028. He's here with us today. Do we have any questions?
Any questions for Chief? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move we appoint Todd Linder to fill the business vacancy of the PSAB with his term expiring in December 2028.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item?
No, I appreciate your application and the personal story that made, I think that's a huge, made a difference and I just wanted to say sorry for your loss.
Yep, thank you very much. You guys won't be disappointed in us and what we bring to the table. So I appreciate everything the city's done for us and Matt's done so much for our family too, so.
Great.
It goes a long ways and we are very appreciative of everything, so.
Thank you for serving.
Thank you.
I have one favor to get a picture with Mr. Linder and the commissioners.
Let's vote first right quick. Hold on, let's vote. All in favor of the, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. That item passed. Okay, now we can get a picture.
Yeah, I'm gonna go on that one. I need a picture. You're in front of the senator.
I was the new walls and I want to be the first one.
Yeah, we all got paint marks on it.
I'm concerned about damaging the new walls. I'm being extra careful. They look so nice.
All right, that concludes the new business items. We're ready for the consent. If you want to pull something off separately, we can. The appropriate motion would be, if you don't want to pull anything off, to approve consent agenda items 13A through 13O and reflecting that on items 13C and 13D, Mayor Cessna abstained.
And before we make that motion, I just want to make sure there's nobody from the public here to comment on any of the items, the nuisance items on the consent agenda. Entertain a motion on 13A through O.
I'll make the motion to approve items 13A through 13O with the abstention of Mayor Cessna on 13C and 13D.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any other discussion on this item? None being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. That item passed.
All right, we're ready for commissioner reports.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Okay, where to start? Let me get my notes out here. I think I, I won't try to cover everything all the other commissioners have, but I think I'd first like to start off with the CIP. We had a great meeting this morning talking about the process of the CIP and what that looks like for the future of Garden City and the voting of those important projects for our community. That's kind of the theme for today, I guess for me, would be considering those meetings that we have been to. I was just at a meeting on Monday and talking about some of the concerns that the community members have, as well as the mention from Tom Howard this morning as well with those issues or concerns that they have. And we definitely ask that you come forward with any of those interests or issues. This is a time where you can come and speak your mind and speak your concerns to us, as well as attending the town hall last Tuesday. Before I get into that, I think just the importance of what goes on between the city business, the county business, the citizens, we all work in a partnership, or at least I'd like to think that we do. And so for anybody that has concerns or issues, I really ask that you come up and speak your voice, no matter if it's a city commission or at a town hall meeting. And so as I get into the town hall meeting, I'm just gonna, I wrote, I wrote this out because I didn't want to, I didn't want to leave anything out, but the town hall meeting was one, there was a speaker there and there was a presentation there for the tax initiative through the county, which I think most of us have heard, but I want to cover what was said just directly to us as far as the city commission and the staff goes. So in that, an individual had addressed not really a specific issue, but shared concern that resonated me deeply, resonated with me deeply. He simply said, "We're not for the working class." Now, I don't, I don't want to get in an argument with any of this, I just, this is my own thoughts, so it's a tough thing to hear, not because it was confrontational, but because it made me reflect. It made me ask, what is the perspective behind that statement? What is this individual experiencing or seeing that makes him feel the way about our leadership? As a commissioner, I want to be clear, we are here for everyone in Garden City, whether the issue is big or small. We listen. But this role is not easy. We are often faced with difficult decisions and the outcomes of those decisions impact real people, our neighbors, our families and our friends. So take downtown for example, it's a complex challenge. We've been working for years on a comprehensive plan for its future, how it makes it more vibrant, more walkable, more visited, but that's not something that happens overnight. We're trying to strike a balance. How do we grow and improve downtown without disrupting the very people who run businesses there every day? We are also asking ourselves tough questions. What do we do about abandoned properties? How can we bring second story spaces back to life? Do we need new ordinances or minimum maintenance standards? What tools can our staff create to support revitalization? We don't have all the answers yet, but we are actively seeking them. We're putting plans together piece by piece and being mindful about how they affect our community. That takes time. Garden City is not the same place it was in the 1930s or when our forefathers founded it. We've grown. We've made investments in our parks, our roads, our zoo, our public spaces, and we can continue to push for improvements because our residents deserve a community they can be proud of. So if you like, so if you feel like we've missed something or if there's something more we need to be doing, please speak up. We are listening. We're here to work through these challenges with you and to keep building a community that serves all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ortiz. Commissioner Enrum.
So I also appreciate the CIP process. I think it's involving the public in anything that we as a city do or we as a commission do is going to be really important, especially going forward. And I appreciate that we're always looking at trying to refine the process to make sure that the public information and the public input is really valued and used from there. I also want to thank just Mr. Howard for coming and also Ernie Wharton for coming and I think it's really important that public comment is just that. It's a chance for the public to hopefully sort out with us as a commission and with us as a city to talk about how can we make, how can we make things better? I know when he talked about being a peacemaker, I really appreciate that role and I think you do a really good job of that. I also just wanted to say thank you for the town hall meeting. I know that there was a sales tax presentation, the sales tax coming from the new law enforcement center, not only the remodel, but also the expansion and/or the moving the current one, current over to the new building. But the thing I thought was really interesting about the sales tax presentation was just that, you know, this is something that we've been talking about for years and years and it's something that now that we as a city and the county have really gotten focused together to move together to say, now is the time. And I'm so grateful that our law enforcement and not only the Finy County Sheriff's Office, but also our Garden City Police Department have been patient with us as a, as a commission and also as a community to say, hey, we want you to have the best that you can have so that you can continue to do the job that you do that's so important. I do want to say thank you also that when Mr. George Wharton came and spoke, you know, I also reflected and I think, you know, lots of the days of Garden City as it grew and I think that we have a really unique story and I think that the story is not done yet, that the story is continuing to be written. And you know, as our city has grown, as we become a regional hub, not only of commerce and not only of transportation and not only of people wanting to move here to see the success, but also our success is built on the foundation of the people who not only established, but the people who continue to say yes to moving here and yes to continue to stay here and really to make our city great. So to pretend like it doesn't take people to come here and to be a part of us, that we be fooling ourselves, but instead knowing that the foundation of who we are is really the foundation of our people. Our people are people of integrity who get up every single day and they go to work to make our city better. And now sometimes their work is in the middle of the night, which I don't want that shift at all, but I'm grateful for the people who do that. But I just want to make sure that we honor those businesses and the people who've said yes to Garden City. And I know that we as a commission have been working to make sure we provide affordable, not only housing, but just affordability overall. And so as we as a commission, if we continue to invite and open up our public comment times and also these town hall meetings, invite the public to come in to make comments, it helps keep us not only humble, but it helps keep us grounded, knowing that we need to move forward together. And so I just, I just want to say thank you for all those who take the time and take the effort to come and speak before the city commission. It matters a lot.
Thank you. Commissioner Landgraf.
So I don't have a lot to add that hasn't already been.
So I don't have a lot to add that hasn't already been said, I just want to repeat that the CIP meeting is really great, being able to have that, be able to refine that process of how exactly it goes about, and then also just want to remind folks about the National Night Out that is tonight, I'm very much looking forward to it. Said there's thirteen different spots, so just really looking forward to that, being able to have kind of an event where not only some of the commissioners, but also the public safety people as well can go out and talk with the community, having that is really important to me, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Nguyen.
Yeah, um, City Hall, um, the presentation at City Hall with, uh, the county chair was very insightful and gives us, equips us with the tools to be able to speak about it and offer that information to voters, so, but again, um, one big thing is for our citizens, those that are going to vote this, this fall, um, is that to do your best to stay as educated as possible, um, and to ensure that you have all the resources at hand to make a, a wise decision for the LAC, for our community. And then I joined, um, Mayor Sessna and a couple of other commissioners, Commissioner Ortiz and Commissioner Landgraf, the Safe Haven Baby Blessing, Baby Box Blessing, and it was such a joyful event to see our community have a resource that is safe and also, um, an avenue for all of the community partners to work together. To see how it works, to see that as soon as an infant is placed inside of that box, it triggers alarms and it forces all these entities to work together, and I think that is beautiful to see. And then also I stayed for a little bit with Safe Kids Day, um, at the event there, and to see all these partnerships available and present within our community was very uplifting. Uh, and again, I'm very excited for National Night Out, so if you're out there, please wave hello to all of us and, uh, come share your concerns too, and I think that is really grateful is that, I think we as commissioners really do our best to be very present at all these events, not simply to enjoy it, but also to be an avenue for other people to come up and share their concerns. And Matt, I apologize for not getting this on your radar before.
That's right.
I had a couple comments about dusty trail in now, um, simply not, not, they're grateful that it's gone, but, um, another problem that arises is the current maintenance of the plot. Um, a couple of them are concerned, business nearby are concerned that eventually when you have tumbleweeds growing, that'll just blow onto their property, so I don't know what could be done, but just.
Yeah, we can, you know, that can be enforced through normal code enforcement, they've got to, even though there's no building there.
Right.
They've got to keep it in compliance with the code, so we'll make sure that that's inspected if it already hasn't been.
Right, gotcha.
Yep, thank you.
Anything else?
Good, um, yeah, I attended the Safe Haven, um, uh, event, uh, really nice event, we had, uh, two young ladies come present to the commission. That's the neat thing about our city and, uh, the commission is we always take in ideas and, um, if it sounds like a pretty good idea, we, we usually run with it, so always something that, um, the other commission, all the other commissioners have kind of noted, uh, trying to enhance our community, um, and this is an enhancement, there's only, uh, two others, uh, like this in the state of Kansas, and we've got the third one here. And, uh, the lady kept, uh, noting that, you know, we cut a hole in our brand-new fire station, but I think it's something that's worthwhile, um, and something that's, uh, possibly really needed in our community, um, it is there, uh, if it is needed. Last week had a tour of the refinery, um, it's coming along and getting closer to completion, and it'll be a great addition, uh, to our community. Uh, attended the, and chaired the tax oversight, uh, board meeting yesterday, um, just, uh, good information on, uh, where we're at, on, uh, our sales tax initiatives, um, had a, a quick, uh, update on the fire station and where we're at with the third fire station. Just wanted to mention, uh, National Night Outs this evening, uh, I know Chairman Schultz during the, uh, Tax Oversight Committee, uh, mentioned that the county did approve the ballot language for the sales tax for the jail and remodel of the LEC, so we're moving forward on that. Tomorrow starts, uh, kind of changing hats a little bit, tomorrow starts a new teacher in service for USD four-five-seven, uh, first day of school for the school district is, uh, Wednesday, August thirteenth, that's an orientation day in the morning, so just be mindful that, uh, school zones will be active on that day, so please slow down, be mindful of the students as well as parents getting kids to and from school. First full day of school is August fourteenth, and then we're rolling with school and the community, so again, just be mindful of, of that as we're getting school prepared and up and rolling. The other, other thing I wanted to mention is, uh, which kind of the commissioners did note is, uh, shop local and fly local. Any other concerns or comments before we adjourn? None? We are adjourned.